All right, my, welcome you to the Fight Back Special Meeting Budget Workshop, March twenty seventh. Uh, it is the Zoom meeting and everything's listed. And moved from that to a hybrid virtual meeting, what, what do you do?
Great, I'm Mark Walton, Tom Missbringer, this is a web based call. We're operating in the following procedures, susceptible to video and audio recording. Ministers and staff have generally their name on mute except when speaking or voting. And we'll generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recognition of staff or the chair. For public input before the meeting, please email your comments to publicinput@columbiacp.org within twenty four hours before the meeting.
All right, over the last meetings minutes, any questions, comments? Um, I did have a comment and correcting. Under member president, it says Jeffrey, the vice chairman. I think it should be Jeffrey, chairman, and then after Julie Jordan, it should be Julia Jordan, like him. Great, uh, motion to accept the correct? Second?
I second.
Home favorite.
Hi.
Bye. All right, right into the budget workshop now and discussion. I know everybody went home, reviewed numbers, rounded, rounded, rounded. Does anybody want to start? Can I lose?
Well, I did have a question and maybe that can answer. But it says that the estimated undesignated fund down was about two ninety seven hundred thousand. But that was estimated as of twenty one twenty two. What is the current estimated fund down?
The current estimated fund balance, if it was enclosed today and everything was spent as is, um, plus taking out the fund balance, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the capital spending, building, culver, engineering. Um, I'm estimating it to be about three million dollars. Yep, based on the current budget requirement. If we don't make any changes to the budget, it's going to be at fourteen point eight five percent.
Any question, any other questions, questions? Bridget, how much of that would you like to spend?
There's a lot of unanswered questions.
Okay.
Um, I think we need to know about the HVAC. To get that one in, that one down, so I, I don't think we can make any decisions on it. Or recommendations on anything this way.
No, I, is it?
I do know that there had, in fact, this is something that happened way back in two thousand and seven and it was kind of an advantage idea. Um, we use the fund balance to pay for, uh, work on the school group. And the fund balance got down to about seven percent rather than eighteen or twenty. And I think we, when the time comes, we need to consider letting the fund down, go lower than we have, down to maybe seven percent. But let's see what the numbers are before we consider those kinds of things.
The odds of us knowing what's going to happen with the pool are, we're gonna know, I'd say, April, that's what we're hearing now, okay?
Yeah, probably end of April.
Okay, that doesn't give us a lot of time. So you're suggesting is we leave the fund balance the way it is? And not use any, and then when we?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. No, I'm suggesting that we be prepared to, to use much of the fund balance, either to cover HVAC, uh, the expenses or to cover the, um, the base of the budget and so on and so on. Um, I don't know. Like I said, we have a history of getting as low as seven percent and right now we're at eighteen percent. Right, so I don't, I wouldn't have a problem going as low as seven percent actually. If we're, but I think it's too early, we don't have the facts and that, that it makes our decision.
Okay. Anybody?
I kind, I kind of agree on the concept that, that the knowledge of HVAC uh, until the end of April, then there's virtually nothing we can do with the budget, yeah? Yes or no? Apply for a, a bond. Put the fees for applying for a bond into a budget item somewhere. And then not even spending any of it, because I think that's long probably to get it. Still want the first, changing the, uh, you know, the fund balance, you know? I, I don't think we should go that drastically. But reducing it a little is, is fine.
We've done it before.
I know, I'm saying.
And it's, and I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying we, it's not doing that, we shouldn't, you know, uh, cause you know, I look at a thirteen point five two percent increase in the mill rate. Um, what that does uh, tax dollar wise to, you know, anybody depending, you know, ten, ten thousand year taxes. Now they're going to be paying out a leather trade or something like that, that's a lot of money. You know, you get older people who are, who may have land acreage and cash flow, that's going to hurt. And that, I, you know, you extend that bar graph. That puts it higher than, than, yeah, whole previous history. And I have one somewhere that I did last year. I'll pull out and see how long it spends and be held. You know, anything that high or how much that increase did. Okay. Well, not scary number, it jumped that quick.
That's three point five mil, that.
Three point five mils, thirteen point five percent.
But, but that's three point five mils, but without the bond.
Right.
That just would be increases.
Right.
But.
All right, well, we're talking about finding out about that, you know, towards the end of April. Uh, April twenty fourth is when we have our public meeting on your budget, how, how far can we push that? Or are those drop dead dates? I mean, we might not know by the time we have to go to the public hearing and the budget.
Okay, I think might be a little flexible, it's just that we town meeting has to be, uh, between second Tuesday of May and the, you first, so.
Okay.
Right now we're in the middle of a town meeting and probably push that out.
But the challenge of, it says in the town meeting, you, the deadline, advertising, the legal notice is April twenty seventh. Right, in order to have a town meeting, when you need so many weeks.
Do we, we know, we, we, we're pretty much certain that we're going to. Right? I think there's any question about bonding, okay? Do we need to wait to start the process for bonding?
Yes, right now we have an hard queue out for a municipal advisor that we're going to be bonding with. And we've had two.
I mean, I know we're waiting on, yeah, I know we're waiting on HVAC to find out how much money we're going to get from the state to cover the HVAC. But we don't necessarily need to wait to start getting a bond.
Cool.
Uh, I think you have, when you submit for a bond, you have to have things set project. We need to know how much to ask for, we can't just say, hey, give a million dollars.
And the projects, well, the main project, HVAC project is authorized by the town.
Yeah, but like, we, we know we're going to be covering these cohorts, we know what, what we're going to be doing.
Yeah, we, we haven't defined those projects yet and we're in the process of creating a sub moving and creating engineering review on the road projects. But the bonding, the whole bonding process is a year. That's how long it takes, because you have to pull all our financials and we have to basically get ready to go out onto the marketplace devised by our municipal advisor or bond council.
Plus town meetings, you have to have numerous town meetings for the president, so they have to go out and bond.
So does that mean that we have to, once we, um, make a decision to proceed with HVAC? Does that mean that we have to put out town money? And then get reimbursed when we receive?
Wait, we would do short term financing until, um, the bond, the bond is set and the project is. I don't know if it has to be totally complete or incrementally the bond can pay it though.
What does short term financing mean?
We go into the marketplace and boil the money or something.
Boil the money. So we don't have to allocate town money?
No.
Listen, only if they pay the amount.
All the things.
We don't know yet, we're waiting, we have to get the municipal advisor and all that, and there's a fee for that. Um, we have a bond council that you will have, um, advertising fees, the site, like an application or something. They said to go out to bond, it could cost nine or ten seventy five thousand to a hundred thousand, that was over a year ago.
That's not going to, that, that should not have came, so.
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
That way you're just still good. Which is why you want the bond to be sizable, that be more than that kind of.
No, I, I agree, I agree, if we're going to go for bond, go for like ten million or whatever, so we'll cover this in a couple, a couple of cohorts, so.
You have to send the bond money, I'm like, do you guys send that?
Yeah, correct, yeah. No, of course, we need to define, we need to define the, the cohorts, we need to find the projects, which they haven't done yet. Um, okay.
Now, like in the last bond I did, these town, we went out for fifteen million to convert a school to a municipal complex. Another two million for radio towers, another half million to fix a fire station and one other project, but we lumped everything into like a twenty million dollar bond. And then those projects took years to accomplish, but bond authorization is there. We did short confinings to find, roll it all in.
Well, I, I, my, my opinion is, is, to be honest, is that I don't know if we can, we're not going to write our decision today. Uh, we need more information, because like whether we're going to cut the budget with the town or the school or, 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 or cut into the general funds, we don't know how much. When you know where to begin, uh, without knowing where we need to.
It's, uh, going to the taxpayer, you know, three point five million increase, except.
No.
Okay.
We're going to, on the heels of that, we're going to say, and we're also going to bump you up, because we're going to.
So, we do that.
No, but like, we don't, we don't even know, but, but what I'm saying is that we don't know where to go, because we don't know if we're going to, if we're going to ask the school and town to be fighting budgets. We don't know how deep they need to cut their budgets until we know what their bond and everything else is going to increase.
Okay. No, I was going to say, we should, we could ask for preliminary cuts, so you have them come back.
Plus the, uh, the amount of money we're speaking out and responding is not anything we can approach from our general fund. Um, so, I, I mean, I almost think the bond is over here and.
Well, I'm talking about the increase, I'm talking about the increase in the mill rate, like, we don't know, like, we're looking at a moving target, so we have three point five, so do we cut it down to one point seven five? To two, to two five, knowing that it's going to be a mill increase? That, you know, is going to be incorporated, knowing the bond's coming down the line?
Well, we don't have a record, you know, we don't have a.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
As I'm saying.
And that's a year up.
It's the next budget.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think that still need to have it incorporated into this budget, but.
Doesn't it make sense for us to have any more meeting? Until the end of April, when we're going to have more information on the bond, because we don't.
That won't, it would be too late.
Yeah, you have a budget, you get jammed so hard, it, it, it'd be ugly.
Because basically, by our charter, you need to have the town budget meeting between the second Tuesday in May and the first Tuesday of June. Now, there's a chance that that town meeting, you don't pass the budget, you still would be tied. You know, I've seen towns go into September, I mean, like, pass the heber, it's notorious.
But that's actually a minimal goal.
Right, so you still have to have that initial one, and he's, in that one.
Would it make sense to move the public hearing? Right now it's scheduled for four twenty four. To move it in September sometime, maybe a week or two after the.
But then you can't have a town meeting.
Then you'd have to go to the, the town meeting.
It's not a period for the town meeting. And all, and, and two weeks before the public hearing?
Or Sundays, but you also have to be a mail around, and that takes time.
Not that I'm not interested, but okay.
But that, uh, I know the mind would, you could say, okay. Uh, we're going to ask for cuts from the board of selectmen and board of, excuse me, Board of Education, okay, and, uh, we might want to locate some number out of the undesignated balance fund to help buy a debt. So that we have some preliminary numbers on the board, not coming in at the end of the month. By July. Okay, I think that would be crazy. All right, we don't want to pull the fund out, if we're going to bond, we want to have the sum down. All right, but that, I think that would be, having biggest to the bank, that would probably be a short term finance. Yeah, probably use your fund balance really quick. Right, so if we're going to use the fund balance, you know, even taking a mill, uh, would put us around two point five, or two point four.
I think we're going to have to use some of the fund downs. The question is just how much, and, and again, some of that fund downs have covered HVAC. Um, so, it's hard to make a decision on this at this point in time.
Well, the final position, decision, yes. In the meantime, we can be, you know, putting numbers on the table, which is.
All right, um, if we wanted it down to one point seven five, we need to find a million eighteen, uh, million dollars and eighteen thousand, uh, to get down to one point seven five, if you're talking two. Uh, I believe it's eight hundred and seventy three thousand, two hundred and ninety six, something like that. And then get down to two point five, you're talking five eighty two. Uh, you need to find the five eighty two to cut. And that's assuming, and that's without any kind of, so they do, five eighty, two point five is, 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 is that the rule?
You go through the math, definitely, or me?
I'm, it's like the increases were.
Uh, seven hundred thousand for Board of Ed.
Yeah, no, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about like, all right, so.
You're talking mill rate, yeah.
Come on, no, right, so you're talking about, you're talking about three point five increase is three, two million thirty seven thousand, six hundred and ninety point eight. And, um, if we're going to, if we're going to try to get it to one point seven five, it's a million eighteen and change, and then, um, uh, and then if you're trying to get down to two, you got to slash eight seventy three and change. And then, and I'm basing it on the eight, five, eight, two. Uh, that they said was the value of the mill rate.
Correct. I guess my question is, I don't have a problem equating where the thirteen point five percent increase in mill rate equates to the budget proposals that were sent, were, were presented to us last week. You know, I, I had, like I said, seven hundred thousand over budget from the previous year for.
Yeah.
Board of Ed.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
A hundred and twenty nine, a hundred and something, I can't, I can't find the number I wrote down.
Four seven, three hundred and twenty four, three twenty four for the, oh, the increase.
Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
It's about the difference, the last year's increase and.
I know, it sounds, I, it sounds like you guys, uh, ask, and I'm.
That comes up to a million, right? So why do we need the thirteen point five, how does that?
No, oh, no, no, like, you're talking, you're asking, where do you get the three point five mil increase, period?
Right, how does it, how does it equate to those numbers?
We had to buy, we had to buy down last year.
So you, you're missing the revenue.
Correct.
Using the general fund to pay for a mill rate buy down. From the previous, from the previous year, so we're starting in the whole million bridge.
And don't forget, the, we had more than general fund last year than we do this year. We had, we're not at all.
Okay, so it's, you're, you're recouping the, the drawdown from the general fund, three hundred grand.
Because that revenue is not, unless we borrow it again.
So the million three equal the three point five, that would.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, I think we have to take some money from the general fund and we have to decide how we're going to, but are we going to be asking the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed to look for cuts too, for, in their budgets? And if we, if we are going to do that, then we have to tell them that we're going to allow them to answer that question, not today, but down the road for the next meeting or the next.
But our next meeting, uh, next one. Right, you like me to choose the, uh, the Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen next year. So you have to tell us today.
Right, so it would be a good idea to come up with something like that.
So then, we should give them, them know that, that this is something that we're going to have to look at.
So it, I'll, I'm like, if we were to look at the undesignated, how much money, and pull it down the mill? Six hundred thousand dollars.
I think, in all honesty, I think one of the mistakes we've made in the past is giving a dollar amount that we want them to cut. What I think we need to do is just ask them if they're thinking that they can cut and to make, um, the tax increase. Let them, rather than give a dollar amount, that worked well last year.
Yeah, yeah.
And someone that I'm not even sure that's a fair approach. Um, I think they should have a target.
I, I, you know, somebody's got to bear some kind of burden. I don't understand saying why we're going to repay three hundred thousand that we took out last year, but we're going to draw down take from it to repay that again. That doesn't make sense to me, I mean, you just leave the other one out, not.
No, what, what, what was going on was that we had decreased artificially the mill rates down to twenty five.
Right.
The mill rate wasn't actually twenty five, we bought our way down to twenty five. So the mill rate was probably realistically about twenty six point seven.
Yeah, brought it down to mil.
Yeah, two mils.
Yeah.
And so, like, there, there was going to be a mill increase this year, the question is by how much?
Right.
And so that's what we were, that's, that's what we're dealing with now, is, is that we bought it down, now we have to, you know, figure out a way to, you know.
Okay.
Make it, make it, make it, make it.
So what you're saying is, three hundred, buy down from last year would be in perpetuity if we didn't address that.
Correct.
So we certainly can't buy it down to mils.
No, we can't.
Now we're trying to sign that.
Five hundred eighty two thousand, one hundred and ninety seven point thirty seven.
Maybe that's a valid.
One mil from the undesignated fund and one mil between Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen. Sixty five, twenty five.
I mean, it gives, it gives them targets that with, uh.
Yeah. What would that be?
There, well, at a half a mil, it would make the, you know, Board of.
Three eighty from the Board of Ed and. One forty five hundred town. Not exactly perfect, because there's ten percent of miscellaneous things, but it's, it's rocked up.
And we're going to start with one point five, one point one?
Yeah.
Is the, do we feel comfortable going to the orders to one point five?
Yes.
Okay.
With the notion that, you're going to one point five this year and there's going to be at least that much next.
Oh, absolutely, and.
Feeling this pain, you know, gradually.
Right, and, uh, you know, look for the education and the Board of Selectmen, both know, they're going to, they do, they do, they do.
Yeah.
During the year, we've never said no. But I think, uh, with what's coming on with the, especially the Board, the school board and the air, air conditioning and all that coming in, I think, I hate to use this word, but the optics would look great for everybody if we were to work on something like that. And if you ran into an issue, we could reimburse you down the road. So we don't get, uh, uh, you know, sticker shut, so we're sitting in the back.
Do this, well, people, is it possible, yes, sometimes, having a public hearing, that will have some sense of the bond money. I mean, I would go, that it's wrong to string the whole idea of bonding after people have, you know, accepted a lot of. I'd like to, I'd like to have it before then, I agree with you.
Yeah. Well, it'd be nice, but we might not.
Well, we could at least begin the process of introducing the.
So whatever you know.
It's not like we're trying to give them the general sense.
Correct.
We know generally what the amount's going to be, we know generally what the interest rates were, I mean.
And I, I have, I have perspectives, as Joe.
All right, so we can.
Every million, we're going to get, yeah. Um, two hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, everyone.
When it's just, uh, if we.
Even if our, uh, we can go to the project.
Okay. Yeah, but we have to get the whole amount, because we have to pay the whole amount, right? And then get reimbursed from the grant, so we, we have to get the six.
You do a six million, but you're only really, the state is paying back fifty two percent of that six million.
Right, so we still have.
Right, right.
But still, you're, you're being reimbursed, so it's just money going out, we're responsible for freedom.
Are we going to reimburse the interest on that? Are we paying for that, from the, from the, from the, from the, from the. If they're working, in the whole thing. That person, right? You're each team, while we're over there with, you know, just a sky. But, uh, I'm thinking about the, how you, the distribution of the three eighty for the Board of Ed, one forty five for the town.
Okay.
One forty five, they're entirely increased. Yeah, and three eighty is half of the Board of Ed's increase. And less of a percentage of the budget. So I'm just wondering, does it make sense to, to use those numbers, if they, as a guideline? Yeah. I mean, they may not be able to do it anyways, but then, obviously, if you're going to fight for everything, but, I guess we have to be serious, I will, I will, I will change the number to higher on the Board of Ed, and well, around there, because you take it out, all of Steve, every, uh, his entire, and, and, and there are less than a third or less twenty percent of the, of the budget come out. Never, there's, we're, we're, those, you know, you know, you back your calendar, you come over and. We were to ask Stephen for seven, seventy five thousand, you know, two and ninety and one, ninety and, uh, we could definitely get, uh, try, four thirty five? Is that right? We should really go and fire you.
And so it would leave out, if, I think, uh, Board of Selectmen was seventy five would mean Board of Education was four fifty two, four fifty. And round numbers.
Yeah.
If, if we start with something just like that. So the numbers that we get started with, the three eighty. Those are important, you know, to there. Who are, yeah.
Accounting for the fact that about ten percent of the budget is, um. Capital and I'm not listening to these things.
Yeah.
Yeah. You sound like Justin to the radio.
Well, I, I think there's merit in what Steve says.
No, 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 no.
Richard, you're quiet. You're quiet over there. I'm, I'm listening.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't have a problem with asking both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed to come up with some cuts. Um, but. What I've said repeatedly is I think one of the most important, anything we need to do. And I don't wanna cut. The Board of Education budget that would impact what's being entered in. So let's see what they come up with. Um, and I know. If you wanted to say that our goal is to cut both the Board of Education. And the Board of Selectmen so that we save one mil, that's okay, that's the goal. But let's see what they can come up with.
Yeah, on the other hand, if you're looking at the first select. Five zero, it is six point four increase and four zero, only five.
Right.
Five one and three. It seems like.
The three about last year. And Board of Ed didn't.
Right, right. Board of Ed.
He, he cut a hundred grand last year.
Yeah.
Board of Ed did and then didn't.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I, I don't think the Board of Selectmen has as much wiggle room that you. With everything that's going on, everything that's.
I mean, the cohorts.
And you hear the, the, the down committee meeting?
Yeah.
That's across the, the way, uh, we all went. I hate to do. Make the. Read the numbers.
Yeah.
Um, I moved that we, um. Ask the Board of Selectmen to reduce the town's budget by seventy five thousand dollars and the Board of Education to reduce their budget by four hundred and fifty thousand. And that we agree to take the equivalent of one mill rate, which is five hundred and eighty two thousand dollars rounded. From the undesignated fund to reduce the proposed mill increase to. One point five.
Andrew, we have a second.
Second.
Conversation.
Is the one, some of the ones. Then the. The doctrine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how does it, so maybe you get to.
The mode of, like, say. They would lower or minimize it.
We're not gonna get to reduce the mill rate increase.
Yeah, never have it. A friend.
So we're gonna amend it to say that? Okay.
Yeah, reduce the mill rate increase.
Yeah, that's unfair. Okay, all those are paid. Pushing it forward. Okay. Access pensions. Yeah. Okay. Um. Yeah, we're not exactly, I'm just. Don't say that, but saying. Uh, will you, Derek?
Or Violet, say that.
Somebody else is listening. My wife, she's babysitting her grandkids.
No.
All right, so I'm sure you, you'll pay back for the borders. We, we got it, yeah, we kinda gave you a target to aim at, you know. We'll be back in session next week. Yeah. Maybe I missed, but I was looking for the detailed flying item budget of the Board of Ed. Did we not get one in that last meeting? Yeah, we did.
Oh, yes.
I think that'll be this.
I think that's talking about the.
Are you talking about this here? Twenty four, four and five. Yeah. We got, we got this last time.
I had twenty three, twenty four in mind. Okay, we got, we got that line.
I don't have twenty four, twenty five.
It all, it all says twenty three, twenty four. On the top of the page. The header.
There's, there's one at the back where it says point three, point five though.
Yeah, yeah.
One, two. There's like five.
I think six, seven, eight pages.
Eight.
Okay, so I, well, that was, how we thought, was that not? Okay, do it.
I was wondering. Specifically, the, the question that was brought up, or the issue was brought up, that the. This place, the tuition one. I guess it's somewhere around three point. Four million, one of the biggest flying items in the budget. Was gonna be higher this year, but it was gonna have fewer people. And it said that it was gonna be, uh, because of school tuitions. Were gonna be greater in the cost of transport. So I assume that that's all done. There's probably a spreadsheet behind that line item that ties into the number of students at each. School and at each grade. High school. It didn't, it didn't break it down to the level that I think I wanted.
The number of, of type school.
With the price, cost per student than four. Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Like, some white stuff got cut off.
There was a line that showed who was at home, a reporter for the past three years, the high schools, who's at Holden, who's at U S M, who's at Magnet, the number.
And this, this presentation.
But it doesn't say the first part.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not like school.
But it's, yeah, so to which now there are any, there are two, I mean, there are, all the tuition rate is probably not.
I mean, you've been in the honor, say, prior year. It's that line item.
He saw, he's having too much to break down.
I mean, I thought that was in the power company, it was a huge one.
The, the previous year. Was over budgeted for several hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. And, you know, we're increasing, I believe we. That could be an over budget design, I don't, I think it could be looked at and. I know you're. We're, we're all helping, grasping, I think, well, well, we're all grasping, so I understand.
Now, I'm not gonna be here next week, as I mentioned earlier, um, but what I'm hoping is that I can get. Input from maybe Barbara and Mark. No later than Wednesday morning, and then I can give my, I can give Jock a call and give my. Hmm, my reaction, um, if Jock and you. Yeah, that would be that. You bring that back, all the underground stories. You'll bring back. Important to you.
Jason Taylor. And I'm gonna be up at, uh, in Boston, uh, in Boston. If the Board of Selectmen, the Board of, uh, Education gets a chance to come back. Next week, it would be next week.
So maybe I can just have, uh, Jim. Go talk.
You, I can, I can. Final resolution.
My go to you.
Okay, we can go when we want to go. If we need to. Right. Yeah.
No, also, you need to make a motion. This is only intended for that meeting.
Yeah.
So just make a motion if it looks like you're going to have it.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, it's, and I will make the motion that, uh, we will have. Any another funded workshop meeting, um. April third. Seventeen AM, right here. All in favor? All votes.
All right, so that will be Derek. So we'll be here next week. Yeah, it's your favorite time. So. What you enjoy.
Mostly with girls. Uh, hi, we're journeying at seven forty one. James.
Okay.